Yeah, everyone. Today is the Town Council regular meeting Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022 at 8:00 a.m. Can we all stand for the pledge, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Constitution, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have visitors. Are there any visitors that would like to be recognized at this time? Any visitors that would like to be recognized? Okay, here are none. We will move on to item number three, which is the approval of the minutes of the January 19th, 2021 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve? A second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item number four is appointments and reappointments. Peter Mizetti, Democrat, Fair Rent Commission until June 30th, 2025. Peter submitted an application online. We all have his information, so if anybody has any questions about this one, if not, we can just look for a motion to appoint Peter to the Fair Rent Commission until June 30th, 2025.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Item number five, the Police Department JAG v. CP grant. They came before us at a previous meeting. We, I just tabled it at that point, so we could get a recommendation from the Police Commission. I'm assuming the Police Commission has met, and they've agreed to move forward on this project, on this grant, I guess is what the outcome of that was. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. So at this point, it's back to us. We wanted, obviously, at that point, we wanted the Commission to review it before we voted on this. So Carol?
That's not what their minutes say. Their minutes say that they, um, a motion was made to have Chief Mayo go back to the Town Council regarding the acceptance of the grant for the program. It doesn't say that they approved the program.
That was the intent.
But that's not what it says.
Well, that's not what it says, but that was the intent.
But that's not what it says.
Okay, we're not going to go back and forth on this. Back in our life.
Because you turned it down, you wanted that to approve, which they did. And now, I'm here. If you don't want to approve, that's up to you, but I don't want to get into arguing with you about what the intent was.
Okay, so we're going to open this for discussion, obviously. So, you know, we did table it the last time. Comments were made that they wanted the Police Commission to review it, and so obviously, they reviewed it and then sent it back. Huh? It's open. It's open to the council to discuss it, Carol. This isn't, I mean, this is a grant that they come forth with, and it's up to everybody in this council.
Not moving there, you can tell you the tenure of the entire meeting.
Well, it would have been good to-
Use your liaison.
It would have been good to see that in the minutes, because that's specifically what we, what Dennis asked for, was to see the approval for the therapy dog program, and that's not what your minutes reflect. Dennis also asked that you, or Tom, whatever, the council asked that you bring in specific numbers for what the program is going to cost in terms of payroll, overtime, training, the car, everything. Do you have that information?
So basically, I will answer any question that you have on that. Right now, we, we're going to manage that program with minimal impact, over time. It's not going to be a standalone program. It's not going to be one officer assigned. Do you want to hear my explanation, or do you want to look over some of them?
I would like the details that you were asked. No, first, I mean, this is not, this is not me-you. This is asking for a specific follow-up for questions that were asked at the council meeting.
To answer your question, but you weren't paying attention.
Because I thought maybe Dennis might weigh in, because he was the one who asked those specific questions.
Let him weigh in. First of all, the way I remember, the end of that meeting was that the chief said that he could do the dog pro, let's separate the dog from the car. The way I remember it going down was that the chief convinced the Commission that he could do the dog program without any cost to the town. Is that correct, chief?
That is correct, sir.
So they said, well, fine, if you could do that, fine. The second thing, as I remember it, as we were leaving, they said, also, we would ask the chief to go to the town to purchase the car under the JAG. Now, the car, we could, they could still have the dog program without the car. The car is separated from the dog, so we shouldn't be mixing the two. The dog program, from what I understand it, is going to happen. He's going to do it whether he gets a car or not a car. I think what we have to discuss here is, are we going to approve this JAG grant, which gives them a car? And they, they, they want to use it for a dog, I guess. But, uh, having said that, I will then go on with my questions, because I, like Carol, have a couple of concerns, and Tom. My first concern is, I don't want it to be an additional car to our fleet. If this is really going to replace this so-called broken car that's sitting someplace behind the police station or behind the town hall, I could almost go for it, except for one reason. I don't want to hear about six months from now, oh, you know, you really can't do that because this grant says you can't replace something that's taxed, uh, in a budget. Most of these grants say you can't replace something that's in an ordinary budget. And then find out, six months from now, this car wasn't eligible for that, so they'll, we'll still replace that broken car out there behind the, wherever it is, and now we'll have an additional vehicle on the fleet, because when you get the additional car to the fleet, then we come with Tom and Carol's concerns about, what is the cost of the town as far as insurance? It's an extra car, it goes on your insurance bill, and the cost of keeping this car, and now is this car rotated in that fleet rotation that we try to keep up with, and we have very diligently in the last five to six years to the Capitol Committee. By rotating cars, we went from buying cars to leasing cars. Now we're going to go back to buying cars, I believe, outright. So I just want those all clarified before we approve this vehicle. That's, that's how I stand on it. I would like to get those questions answered about, is this an extra car? Is it always, or not? I don't want it to be an extra car, and I don't want to find out later, well, I'm sorry, that car that you got under the grant, uh, you really can't do that because it's replacing a budgetary, uh, provision. And I think, uh, people that are more familiar with grants, I am a little bit, but I'm certainly no Einstein on it, but know that when you get a grant, they specifically say you can't replace something that is ordinarily in a budget. And that's all I want to make sure. Case closed for me.
So I mean, I think, like, the last meeting, obviously, that we had, and we discussed this, and they brought everything forth, I mean, there was the confusion as far as the grant goes, but I mean, the dog itself, the cost of the dog, covering that cost going forward, I think it's been pretty clear that they're going to take care of all the costs associated with that through donations and such, so.
I mean, if it makes it easier, let's just forget about the car. We won't use the JAG for a car, and we won't put another car in the fleet, because it's not going to be an additional, like you said, it's not going to stand alone officer with the dog just to go out and do those community outreach things. It's going to be an additional duty to whoever it's going to be assigned to. So if it's assigned to one of my investigators, it's going to be assigned to the U. officer, it's going to be assigned to the patrol officer, that dog is going to be an additional assigned onto that person. So, and the training is very minimal once you are outside of the initial training period of 18 days just to get yourself allocated to the program. So, not like a regular canine, which requires normal upkeep, and we have to have training hours tracked to keep the dog certification and all the other pieces. That is not the same thing with this kind of dog. Two, they're very different types of animals. They're used for two completely different purposes. Canine, the official canine, like you think of when you see somebody in, in his car and all his equipment and all his training and all those things, that's a much, much larger program than this. This is just basically a service dog. It's pretty well-trained by the time it comes to us. Once we have it, then we implement and use it the ways that we see fit for community outreach, for officer wellness, and for all the other things that we talked about. So if the car is the second point, I don't, I just, I won't use it for the dog. That's fine, because I'll just assign it to whoever's going to get it. If it's one of my investigators, they have a car assigned to them already. If it's patrol, when they roll out of patrol, they think the dog will. That, I mean, if that's, so that's really, if that's your concern, and I understand that, and you don't want to add another part to the fleet, I'm fine with that. We've worked very hard on our end, too, to try and provide you with a workable fleet that keeps our officers out of the road and not waiting around for cars to come in because they're constantly being repaired. And I think we've all worked together. We've got a nice program here where we've seen some residual value in the vehicles, we're seeing reliable service, and we're seeing cars that look decent and not hopefully crap out on their own.
And just so we're clear, so it's not, it isn't replacing, I mean, it's replacing, it's, it's not an additional vehicle.
Right now, we're down one, so.
Right.
We'd like to replace that one that I have right now. We have one of the detectives driving around in a pickup truck that we use for emergency services and, and storms and traffic info, but that's only spare vehicle yet, so obviously we can keep that back to its intended program.
Any other questions?
The town?
No, mine was, they brought up my thoughts. I just want to, you know, if we're not going to use it for the car, I want to make sure that you're going to be able to account for the $25,000, because I'm a man-
Tom, I'm sorry, I have this blind. Could you speak up louder?
I wish I could.
I'm going to yell.
Should I take this off? My concern was to make sure that the $25,000 can be accounted for, or do we have to give it back if it's not spent within a current, a certain period of time?
It's a, it's a broad-based grant, and it's anything to do with crime prevention and community outreach, so I can obviously track any expenses that I have with the dog, the equipment it's going to take, the train, the additional pieces of the program. We can, we can live all that, and we'll stay well within the framework of, we've managed grants before, so I'm confident that we'll be able to do that.
Just want to make sure that as we get our budgets, that we're aware of the, whatever costs are involved in this thing, and that they're offset with any kind of money. I think that was the one concern that the Police Commission also had, was to make sure that it didn't increase the operating budget.
Yeah, it won't increase the operating budget.
Well, now, now you just confuse me, because you interwove the car with the dog program again. So, the $25,000 grant is for a car, and when I read the grant application, it did sound like it would pay, it would support a vehicle, a purchase of a vehicle for a police department. And if this is replacing a vehicle that is derelict in your fleet right now, then, uh, then that makes sense to me, to ask to apply for it. But if this car is designated for a therapy dog, that I would not support.
Well, based upon the conversation we just had, I thought you don't want to add the car to the fleet, so we're going to just leave that car out of it. I'm not going to use the money for the car.
So what would you use it for? For the dog?
For the program itself. Correct. I mean, the dog is going to be going, there's no cost there for run the program, get the equipment that we're going to need with it, and any other program concessions that go with it. We use the money for that. Or if we still, or if we just want to make it, that's fine. I mean, either way, it's up to you. If you don't want to take the grant, I, I can understand that. I have a hundred donors that we donate to the program, and it won't be a, it will not be a cost in municipal budget. I run seven other programs the same way. I get ones to come in, I manage my people, we get people to volunteer and do the job, they do the work, and we provide the service. If you have a proven factor, you can do that.
Well, reading the, this specifics that were in that first packet of information, it did sound like it would pay for a car.
Correct, that was the initial intent, but-
But it, but it didn't sound like it would take care of a dog, because it all sounded like it was geared towards police responding to, um, to-
The initial grant request, we were going to use it, that was the intent, we would use that to purchase a vehicle for the program, but it seems that you are not interested in that, so I'm willing to take that on the day.
Yeah, no, I'm not interested in buying a car for the program, but if it would support replacing a bad car in your fleet?
Well, as Dennis mentioned, you can't really, you cannot, using any JAG grant passed from the federal government under the burn, grant system is not going to allow you to supplement a regular budget, so if you have a regular fleet budget, you can't supplant that with money.
Okay.
Correct. So you can't replace one vehicle that you already had in your own fleet. It would have to be an additional.
So on the di, so at the end, it would be an additional vehicle, because that means that next year, whenever, that broken vehicle, they would ask to replace it. So this vehicle that he's asked, originally asked for $25,000 was to add a vehicle to the fleet. But the chief is now, if I understand you correctly, are withdrawing the statement about using the 24, $25,000 for a car. You will use it to supplement the dog, and there are a list of other things in that grant that you can, I understand you can take care of your boat. I think it said something on the bottom, I saw it, could make repairs to boats and things like that, so. You're right, Carol. I don't want to mix oranges with pears. The situation is this, that as far as I'm concerned, I would, the dog is going to happen. What we want to do is just address, are we going to accept this grant? And I guess we can or cannot stipulate and say, well, yes, we want to accept the grant, but please don't buy a vehicle with it.
Well, Dennis, you're saying the dog is going to happen.
It is.
Why is that a given?
Because they're going to do that dog program with or without the, an additional car. They can do it. He told the Commission that, uh, without hurting the budget, without hurting anything else, his budget, our budget, that he can do that dog program just out of whatever they have for a police budget and donations, that the dog program is separate. They're going to do it. They're going to, they're going to have a dog. The Police Commission accepted it and said, go forward, chief.
Can I ask, is there a demonstrated need for this dog?
Yeah.
I can understand the desire for it, because it seems to be trending. There are very few other towns in Connecticut that have it. This seems to be more of a want than a need, but is there, I mean, Clinton, 13,000 people are declining. Is there a need in Clinton to institute this program?
I see there's a need in the opportunity for the program.
I can see the opportunity, but I'm, I'm not, I'm not understanding the need.
Just for my officers alone, just for the officer wellness aspect alone, I think there's an extreme need. For the past two and a half years, we've had nothing but constant vilification of the profession.
As has every police department.
So why can't we help ours? Why should we just let them suffer? I, and I have an opportunity to, you know, retain my officers and keep a good, healthy working environment for them, that's my job. I should be pursuing every avenue I possibly could, provide them with a good, safe, productive work environment, and if it's going to cost the town basically nothing to run it, which it won't, and again, I come to you and say that I've demonstrated for the past six years, I run a tight ship, I'm running this police department for a million dollars a year lasting every single community around us. I think I know how to run the programs, and I think I've chosen programs that help this community, advance law enforcement here. We've got a good police department. And I'm asking you to allow me to put another program in place, and I feel those are going to benefit the community and benefit our officers.
So, so-
That's the end of the day. I mean, if you think that that's a want, that's fine.
So you are saying-
You can say no to the grant, but that's what I'm doing.
I mean, at this point, we're not, I mean, we're not, no, no.
Chris, let me just speak for a second.
You've been speaking, Carol, even other people need the opportunity to speak as well. That's all. Okay, just one second. We're talking about a dog now. That is done. They're saying that it's done, it's done. Whether you agree or disagree with the fact of a dog being put in place, it would be your opinion. That is not the opinion of police force, that's not the opinion of the Police Commission. They've come before us and said, we would like to apply for a grant. That's what's in front of this council right now, the grant. So we're either going to approve, or we are not going to approve the grant that they are asking for. We're not going to continue to talk about the dog. That's not what's before us.
So the application that we saw from the patrol officer a month ago was not specific at all about the tw, wouldn't we be approving a document that described what Chief D'Mayo was saying now, rather than what we saw last month?
I don't have that phone.
They, they brought in an application that read differently from what we're, we're here, is, what you're saying this morning. So wouldn't that be, wouldn't we have to vote on an amended, um, grant application?
Right. We can sit here and vote on something that says we're going to approve the grant subject to, you know, for, or for not used for a vehicle, or whatever you may want it to say, and they're going to have to fill out that documentation anyways when they, when they fill out and apply for the specific grant.
The right section for the state, so we can do it that way.
That mean, that's simple enough.
I have one, one, now, you just said that the dog would not be assigned to one particular patrol person.
No, I didn't say that. It would be assigned for a singular function of community service law. It would be assigned to one person. We don't know if that person is going to be assigned to investigations, or the school, or patrol. There's a, there's a large process that, that takes place with the group that provides the dog. They really come in and do interviews, and they want to make sure that certain conditions in place before they put it off, but anyway, so I'm not really sure. I'll wait until I select just yet, until I have their input, and we go through all that process, but it'll be an insider duty, it's not going to, we're not taking one patrol in this lot and saying that is now reassigned as the community service officer, which some communities have that luxury, we don't have that luxury. We don't have that, we don't have the resources or the manpower to do that, so it'll be an additional.
So at this point, I guess we should just move forward and look for a motion?
I'll make an amended motion, if you will.
There you go.
I would make an amended motion to the original application that the Town Council-
Hang on, hang on, one second. We have to, we actually tabled this.
Yeah, put it on the table, see, after the motion-
Take it off the table?
Off the table first.
Okay. I make a motion that we take the JAG application that was tabled off the table for discussion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And I'll make a motion that the Town Council accept or put in, let the Police Department put in for the $25,000 JAG grant, amended to the fact that they do not buy a vehicle with it, but use it to either augment their dog program or other eligible programs within the Police Department.
Second? Any further discussion?
I just, for clarification's sake, I think everybody needs to understand their responsibility, so if there is a discussion, yes, we're approving a grant. If there is a discussion further along regarding acquiring an additional dog, that technically does come back to the Town Council. We don't have a board of finance anymore, so that portion then also defers to the Town Council as well. So just so everybody fully understands their responsibility, I thought we should just clarify that as well.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Uh, number six is sidewalks on Lefingwell. We received an email, a follow-up email from Darby Hiddle, who came to a meeting a couple weeks ago, spoke on, um, on the condition of the sidewalks and on some issues he had with the sidewalks and the height of the sidewalks, and feeling that they may not be ADA compliant. So I guess at this point, I responded to an email that Darby had sent. He was wondering if it was going to go back on the council's agenda so that we could discuss it, to see if there was something that we would be willing to do. I did speak to Todd Hijack, and Todd decided, and said that he had indicated that in the spring, that they can go out there and they can shave the portion of that sidewalk, which would limit this, I guess, lip and, and prevent some, some issues going forward. So that's sort of what's on the table now. If everybody is agreeable, kind of with that, we can put that in place. Todd has agreed to it. He said he could do it in the spring, so it's, you know, something that technically we are agreeable to, we can move forward with that. So I will open it up for discussion.
When's that the limit of what do you want it done?
Yeah, I mean, replacing the sidewalks is really not an option.
No, no.
Yeah, right. So I mean, the other-
That's fine with him.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that he was concerned about. He thought it was a hazard, so it's something that if we fix, it would be helpful.
I'm sorry, what was the last part of what you said?
Which one?
What are we discussing actually doing?
Uh, the shaving of, there, there's a lip on the connection between the sidewalks and the road, and he thinks it's a hazard. So Todd has agreed to shave that. He did shave Darby's already. That was already done on his part. So I guess they're going to continue along and do that on the, on the road.
Shave the curb at Darby's so that he could maneuver his boat into his parking lot without popping over the curb. So it's degrade the edge of the curb where it comes down at the driveway apron against where the edge of the sidewalk is, so it's taking it down so you don't have the curb higher than the sidewalk as the sidewalk tapers down.
There's another. Are you raising your hand?
No, I'm sorry. I was just sort of like going along as he was, I'm sorry.
Um, just, it does also raise where we are in terms of our plan, both road improvements and sidewalk improvements, so that's a question for Carol. When we have some sort of document that outlines the next five years of improvements and funding for them?
Well, funding is an annual budget process, and we're obviously working on that now. So that's, that's the next nexus with the council.
I, I would like to see a document that outlines a plan according to the grading that's taken place of all the sidewalks and roads in towns, which needs improvements, what's on the hierarchy in terms of improvements, and that will also help, I think, align well with the budget process.
Dennis? No?
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm sorry.
Nope, it's okay. Anybody else have any comments on the Lefingwell issue?
I guess just in passing, I was interested that Lefingwell got a sidewalk when there are, what I would think would be other priorities, like Carriedale leading to Elliott School?
It had a sidewalk.
The other side, the north side?
Lefingwell had a sidewalk.
Oh, they had a sidewalk, and they were replacing it?
It's not new, it's reconfigured. So they restored or replaced what was there.
And there are other sidewalks in town that need that, so, again, leading to schools.
I'll keep my hands up.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. So are we good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so a motion, I guess, do we need a motion?
No.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll deal with that, and Todd will take care of that come springtime. We'll move on to item number seven, which is council discussion, future projects and correspondence sits, so we will open it up to discussion.
I'll have the log streamlined to reflect the last conversation we had, so it's the topics of the conversation, description and latest update. So ARPA, you know, we've been through the council workshops, we know you've been through the public hearing, so as you all know, the next step is for us, council to hold some sort of workshop or meeting for final vetting before we send motions off to the special town meeting, and request that they, that they meet. So that's a matter of the council clearing its calendar to spend some time focusing on final vetting. Pearson, that's up again for the council to hold some sort of executive session for a briefing to make sure that everybody is on the same page, so that those that have been on the council previously have the same amount of knowledge as those that are newly on the council, and any update, if, if any, relative to moving the side prey or other action forward. Natural hazard mitigation plan, again, this is teed up, the council will have to spend some time with a workshop. You'll also need to read the document itself in advance of that workshop to have a discussion. Fire department facility plan, it was just presented to the last council, so this, this council and the new members do not, are not aware of the issue to the same extent as others, so we're talking about yet another workshop to focus on the fire department's building plans, and then what that translates into for the town in financing. Radio replacement project, this was included in the capital improvement plan for the current fiscal year that we're in. The study for what the replacement system looks like is near final, we're waiting for refined numbers. The council needs to be briefed on that project, and then a decision needs to be made on how it's going to be financed. We already have some- We already have some money in the budget, but obviously more monies will be required. Communications, we're doing the bi-monthly posting on Facebook, and we've discussed that before. So pretty much everything at this point is at a juncture of the council committing time to having workshops, extra meetings, and in case of natural hazards mitigation, reading the plan that's on the COGS website.
Comments?
I, I know we're coming into budget season, but I would love to have an executive session on Pearson to get up to speed as a new council member. Not, not right now, but in the future.
I'd also love to see the public meeting, or the town meeting, I'm sorry, soon rather than later.
Your meeting needs to be sooner.
Then we'll do that.
The council needs to meet first.
Okay.
You need to review it first before you race to attending meeting.
Let's meet, I'd like to see that money get out to people.
So we'll have Mary then send an email out to all the council members, and we'll arrange for a workshop for the ARPA funding. An executive session for Pearson, I mean, I don't know what, I mean, I mean normally, I guess, just an update on kind of what's happening with it.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we, being a new council member, I don't know, maybe there's nothing to know, but if there is, I'd love to know more about it.
Could the study be discussed, or is that an executive session? Issue two.
I will distribute the study, and you will need to read that and be prepared to discuss it.
All right.
That, since that deals with future uses, it's jumping over the land issue and the side brain action, so it's additional information, but it's not critical to the decision-making process at this juncture. Because you're jumping over the Attorney General's office process. The study would be talking about future use, which is after you've made a decision on clearing the title, so you're, you're jumping over what sequentially needs to be done. But I will get it out to everybody, and you can read it at your leisure.
I noticed the temporary senior center disappeared. Is there a reason we can't put that back on?
I need engagement from the council on what you want for projects. A temporary senior center needs some engagement on what constitutes temporary senior center. We hired an individual to do programming, that individual then left for personal reasons. I need to rehire that person, so until we have somebody, I don't get why you would have a senior center, temporary or otherwise. Otherwise, you're just creating a room for people to hang out in, and that's not a senior center. That's a disservice to the public. So if that's going to be the standard of what a senior center is, is making a room available with no programs, I need the council to tell me that that's what you want. You have an advisory committee that did not endorse that concept. So if you want to go down that path of making a room available, I need the council to tell me that that's going to be the senior program.
How does the council discuss that?
We open it up for discussion.
This is on the agenda every single meeting.
The log is? Everything on the log?
Council discussion.
Okay.
Future projects is there. These are all things where this is the time for the council to bring up things. So if you want to have a discussion on what's going to be a senior center, what is it going to be? Is it going to be a room with no program, no program coordinator, just a room? Or are you going to actually try and build a program that does something for seniors going forward?
What I'd like to suggest, and this is just the beginning of the conversation, we don't have to have the entire conversation here, obviously now, no, but looking at the survey in the past, it seems that the seniors wanted the room that is in the annex. They wanted a room to watch movies and to play games. I understand that we are hiring somebody, but I can't imagine that having a space for that person would be a bad thing before hiring them. Those are my thoughts. And again, we don't have to discuss it today, but I would like that to be discussed, because 20% of our population are seniors, and senior center has been part of our dialogue in the past. Dennis?
Well, you know, I have to agree with both of you, I guess, but can't put the cart in front of the horse again. If we have this room, which I'm all in favor of, don't get me wrong, but first of all, we'd have to find room in that annex. As you know, for years, that room is quite crowded now. Right now, they have the, all the equipment and stuff from the estuary and the cooking, preparations of meals, not preparation, but the delivery of meals from that room. So that room isn't quite as free as everybody thinks it is. I wish it were. But who would run these movies and all this? You can't just say, well, we'll have a bunch of volunteers show up, and if the volunteers don't show up. So I have to agree with the town manager that I would like to see in place that coordinator first, and certainly then move on forward to finding a room to provide services. But I, I think I'd have to agree with the town manager that let's get the coordinator, which unfortunately bowed out when we were heading in that direction, let's get that individual so that when we say we have a room, for instance, this room, let's just say we designated this room for what you're saying, movies or whatever, then at least we have an individual who says the movies will be ba-ba, 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 and I have a committee of volunteers, and this is how we move on. Does that make any sense at all, Karen?
It does. It also makes sense that, I mean, may I be so bold as to suggest that the Estuary Meals on Wheels group be put in Pearson temporarily?
Can't use the space.
Say that again?
Okay.
They can't use the kitchen.
Okay, I get it. So just thinking about moving them and putting them in another space. And another thing, again, I don't think that it would be problematic when you're hiring someone to let them know they have a space. They didn't have that before. Another thing, seniors are mature enough to be able to meet in a room and turn on a movie by themselves. Not to be rude, but they don't need a babysitter.
I mean, those are good points.
They simply like a space.
So just historically, so everybody's aware, we already met with the Estuary Council seniors, we had met with the Public Works Department and discussed what equipment could be removed from that room. We allocated areas of the room to couches. We were going to start looking for donations of couches once the process of town manager came in, and we had, did have that lag between that timeline. So the folks who do participate in the meals that take place over there were interested in continuing with playing mahjong and other games. They would like to have anywhere from a coffee maker to options placed in there, so those were discussions. Again, these things really are feasible if we want to start allocating the space to be used. The custodian would obviously have to make sure it is unlocked during those times. Obviously, business hours, it is unlocked if anybody wants to utilize it, an additional timeline. We currently pay the Estuary Council seniors an annual budget, and they were willing to expand the programming to the town of Clinton. Most of their programming takes place in Old Sabre, so we just need to approach them and say, hey, why don't you move some of your programming to Clinton so we can have more diversity? Obviously, it's an issue with COVID and whether or not we're going to take on that role. That's another discussion the town manager probably should be having with the Estuary Council seniors.
Any other comments?
So just one other, so I, I know, I'm not sure of procedure and order, but I did talk to Mike Nuzzo about the steep grant and his property behind Grand Pizza, and he had some concerns and comments, and so I told him to come to the town council and talk to me, and I know he was late as a visitor, but he had wanted to make some comments. I don't know if he's allowed to.
Sure. Yeah, just come, you can come over here, Mike, if you, so we can hear you with it filming?
You guys all know, I've been here since 21 years now, Main Street. Going back, it was a family business. My father, in 1955, moved in. I've been on the shoreline for 29 years. I have Grand Beets Clinton, I have Grand Beets Madison, Grand Beets Guilford, and I have another restaurant with my brother in Arizona. I've been here 21 years, and nothing's happened. I have a landlord, all my other landlords, I make a phone call, things get done. I have a landlord that I paid him over a million dollars in rent, and he has not put five cents into my building. Okay? The back parking lot is like, just, it's, it's a mess. It's, I've talked to the other owners there, I've talked to Jerry, I've talked to Chris, I've talked to Ray, nobody, it just keeps going on and on, it's just talk, nothing gets done. Last year, a customer of mine fell in the parking lot. She sued the, part of the condominium association, my building, Jerry's building, and the other building. The parking lot's in waves, there's all cracks in it. I talked to Carl earlier, I don't know, from September, October, there's a big rack problem in the back, way in the back where the dumpsters are. Nobody wants to take responsibility, you know, it's a big thing, who owns the property, the town or the owners of the building? I own two houses in this town. I put my kids, three kids, through the school system in town. I own a business in town. I'm the anchor on Main Street. I'm in that building 362 days a year, Christmas, Thanksgiving, and Easter, the only time that building is closed. We're there from 10:00 in the morning and 10:00 at night. My business is pandemic-proof, it's recession-proof, it just goes. I got people that come from all over New England, all over the country in the summertime. People come camping in Hammond, I said, from Idaho, from Washington, from Texas, they come right to my place. If I was somebody, I wouldn't even come in, it's a dump. On the outside, it's a dump. Main Street is a dump, I hate to say it, but it's a dump. My Madison, downtown Madison, I have no problem. I call my landlord, things are done. It's a new building, but if I need something done, it's done. Guilford, I have a Chinese owner, I call him, it's done. My Arizona, I have a restaurant that looks over red rocks. I had a rock in front, a red rock that was blocking the mountain site for my patio. I called the town, they blasted the rock out of there. This is the minor leagues here, it hasn't made the major leagues yet. All we do is talk about it, talk about it, talk, but nothing gets done, it's just all talk. So I, like I said, my business goes automatically, but the aesthetics of the business in the outside, the building, and the parking lot in the back, that's where a lot of people come through, the main focal point of planning. People park back there all summer long, when there's events and stuff. It's a mess, it's a dump. There's a light, there's one light in the parking lot, it looks like it's from 1960. So we all sit here, and we talk about it, we talk about it, and that's all we do. We'll go, we'll be going into 2023, nothing's going to, and I told John Allen, he's always in touch with me, he's been very good to me with the steep thing going on, but I don't believe it till I see it.
Hey, Mike. I made your response to the comments. I don't think anybody here can sit here and say they deny any of that. Unfortunately, they're privately owned properties, and like you said, you have a landlord that doesn't want to do anything. And obviously, they need, the landlords have to have some input in all this as well, whether it be your building, whether it be the parking lot, whether it be anything over there.
Parking lot, the town comes to and plows it, so how, who's, who's?
The town doesn't own that, that parking lot.
But they plow it, so, you know, the town, private property there?
Well, there's an easement on there, and as I communicated in the fall, all the property owners are supposed to give the town a proportionate share for the service to maintain that lot. And then that was the end of it. So Jerry was kind enough to give me the thread to start polling. I go through the land records, there's an easement over that back lot. The town's supposed to do things, but with money that's provided by the property owners. If the property owners aren't providing their proportionate share, then you have a problem with what was envisioned in the 70s getting done. And what was envisioned in the 70s doesn't seem to have ever come to pass.
Well, what about part of the grant that's coming in? Can't use part of the grant for that?
The ARPA funding?
No, the steep grant. The steep grant was specific to facades to improve the appearance of the downtown. I got the state to back down on requiring three quotes to get in two quotes, because that was what I was getting as feedback, that two quotes were doable, three quotes was impossible. So we're now at two quotes. It's easier now to move it along as long as you got two quotes. So I'm waiting, I'm being told by John Allen, people are ready to come. I'm waiting for your application, because I received information from John Allen that you're ready to go. I've got one other business that finally gave me their second quote, and they're T W, ready to go, so.
Like I said, I have, I have monthly pest control. I have nothing in my building or nothing around my building. I put in an extra $1,500 on the floor to take care of the building in the back where the railroad tracks are, all the dumpster stuff. I'm not, I'm not even an owner of a building, and I'm financing the pest control. There's other owners, there's a liquor store, there's another pizza place, there's Jerry, there's the barber shop, and I'm fin, and the guy Chris, I'm financing, I'm not even an owner of a building, I'm financing the rack problem.
Right, I mean, listen, that's a problem. I mean, I don't think anybody's going to deny that either. But again, at what point then do these property owners then have the, you know, the responsibility to, to step up and do what they're supposed to do? You know, like you said, you've paid a lot of money, you've done a lot of work, we've had these conversations, we've talked about it, and he does nothing. You know, and that's, that's a problem. You know, and, and again, you can't force a landlord to do anything, so, you know, how do we fix the problem? You know, the steep grants are helpful, you know, we, you know, there's a good portion of that then that would be, you know, provided by the steep grant, and a small portion by the property owner, but the property owner still has to, you know, be a part of that, you know, show up and be involved. And unfortunately, you can't always make that property owner show up and do something, like you've had your problem with. So yes, it's an ongoing problem, and, you know, will it ever get solved? I don't know. We're certainly going to continue to talk about it, because if you don't talk about it, then it's not out in the forefront. So we certainly need to continue to have the conversations about it. How we get about, you know, how we get about to the end line, I mean, that's, I guess, discussion for the town and for everyone else, for us to continue to discuss to see what we are able to do.
Does the health department not have any role in this?
The health department has been out there. I called the health department, no one else in town called the health department. I called the health department to go out there. Then trying to get response out of the health department for what the next steps are became problematic. We were waiting for a written plan for what the first step is to, do you eradicate, do you scrape away the dirt? What is the approach that's going to make the health department happy?
And that's, again, I mean, people need to understand, the town isn't just sitting there doing nothing. The town is doing stuff, the town is trying to, you know, help out where they can and do these things, but a lot of these things are out of the, the town's hands as it relates to the property owners. But as it relates to certain things, the town is doing stuff that's, you know, that's his, Carl's job, and he is taking care of it. So again, it's got to be an ongoing conversation. I understand your frustration, I mean, but, you know.
Like I said, my business looks, it's not profitable, it's just, it's just the look of the, the look of the roof line. I got a board that's coming down. I painted the building twice in the last five years, it's just, it's rotted out. I'm not going to put no more money in the building. I tried to buy the building, he don't want to sell it. I tried to do certain things, he just won't come forward. Like I said, I paid rent for 21 years there, and I got nothing back. I put $150,000 inside for new floors, new ceilings, new booths, new everything. I can't put nothing else into the building. It's not working.
Yep. In any way possible, this new BLIT ordinance that we passed, and having soon, I hope, a BLIT enforcement officer, whatever, in any way at all, could that help the situation by putting pressure on that landowner to address some of the things as Mr. Nuzzo has expressed? The board falling off the front, certainly, you know, that's got to be an eyesore or something along the lines, it could be a possible violation. I'm just wondering if any way at all, that new BLIT ordinance that we passed can help individuals with reluctant landowners?
Under what definition? It's not derelict. I mean, it's in full and active use, so you could get a CO for the building, doesn't have overgrown weeds or, or has been abandoned. I can't see where.
Board falling off, doesn't?
Huh?
A board falling off into the sidewalk, a public sidewalk, that doesn't?
Well, that might be a safety hazard, but that wouldn't be BLIT.
Oh, okay.
May not look very nice, but.
Well, I think, you know, personally, I think hearing about it and talking about it will, you know, we can brainstorm and try to think of ways to help, and not, not that we didn't know this ahead of, already, and we're not working on it, but it's good to talk about it and hear from a business owner, I think.
I mean, that's the, I mean, the issue then, I mean, we got the facade improvement funding, we saw, you know, a picture of what we would, hope it would look like should these people, and everybody jumped on that, and it, and it looked pretty, and it looked nice, and it looked great. The problem is, is that you need the involvement of the, of the property owners. The business owners are great. I don't think anybody's going to complain about one business owner there, but if he doesn't own his building, he's got a problem. Because he can do everything like he's done for 20-plus years, but if you got, but if you got a property owner that is neglect, not around. you got a property owner that is neglect, not around, doesn't care about it, pays his rent every month, that landlord's cashing his check every month. So, you know, I mean, that's the problem. So, you know, the other problem is, you know, I think just the facade program in general and some of the information that was put out at the beginning kind of confused some people as far as how that money was supposed to be, you know, allocated and spent and, you know, the, the things that they needed to do for the property owners. So, you know, I think there was a lot of miscommunication, I think, at the beginning, that facade program, you know, would be for business owners. It's not for business owners, unfortunately, it's for a property owner, because they need their involvement to fix their building.
I don't, I don't want to move because I'm entrenched, it's the center of town. I've been there 21 years. Everybody goes, summer people especially, they come all over. I don't want to move.
And the program, the program was written so you could apply. Just need to have the property owner sign off that he concurs. That's it.
That's tough.
Yeah, so I'm waiting for an application.
Yeah.
I mean, does John Allen have it? I mean, where is it? John Allen is my source of information, so he's telling me it's coming.
John has it. I, I, yeah, John has it.
All right, well, then, I don't have it. So, and it doesn't go to John?
I told you guys we're in communication with somebody.
I'm telling, I'm being told it's coming. I'm not being told it's done. I'm not being told he has it, so that puts it in a little bit of a problem. And the application says, the application says it comes to Town Hall, to the town manager's office, not to the EDC. It comes to Town Hall. That's where.
Some of these government forms to fill out are like rocket science as well.
It's three pages, and it's pretty simple. If John's got it, then I'm going to get it out of John's hands.
I want you to PPP process, deploy potential credit processes.
That's federal. This is local, and it's meant to be easy. If John Allen's got it, then I'm going to get it out of John Allen's hands.
All right. So we'll, obviously, we will continue as a council to continue to discuss this and continue to have the conversations, and do what we can in order to, you know, help improve that area. I mean, I don't think anybody's going to deny all that, so we'll continue those conversations as well. Anybody else have anything else under this topic? All right, here and done, we will quickly move on. Chairman's comments, very quickly, we have the Expo, Business Expo tomorrow in the Green Room tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, Clinton-Killenworth in Westbrook. So obviously, if people are around and available would like to show up, that would be great. That's all I have for chairman's comments. Town manager's report.
You have our written reports. The budget is the big milestone to be focused on. I gave you the listing of the individual budgets that will be reviewed each and every night. So the budget will be presented on the ninth, special meeting of the town council. I will give the town side, the debt side, capital, and revenue. The superintendent will be in attendance, and she will give a quick overview of the Board of Ed budget. Then on evenings of the 17th to 22nd, and the 24th, would be getting into the detail of each individual line item, explaining to the council what's in the budget, identifying areas for amendment. Then on the March 2nd would be finalizing the budget with the council for what final amendments you want to make before it goes off to a public hearing scheduled for April. The governor is going to be dropping his budget on the same day, so earlier in the morning, we'll find out where state aid is going and what that means for the town's budget on the revenue side. I did identify for, I need to have a conversation with you on fire department vehicle purchasing. We have set aside monies for purchase of vehicles in the capital plan. We went out for a bid for the first vehicle to be replaced, which is a pumper. The cost for the pumper came in higher than what's in the budget, so that raises some questions in terms of how you want to structure the financing, whether we do a lease purchase for this vehicle. The chief would like to also get the boat funded at the same time, which prior council has heard as two potential grant applications. That grant was not awarded either time, so it would be adding the boat to the discussion, which would be a new purchase for the town council, because it's not been a purchase item, it was a grant-funded item. That could be leased also, but it starts to back you into forced fiscal discipline as it relates to capital, and now it turns into a debt payment, which is a must-pay. So that requires some engagement from the council in terms of how you want to move forward with that. The pumper is somewhat important to make a funding decision on because with inflation and the rest, vendors cannot commit to long terms on pricing, so unfortunately, a decision has to be made very quickly to make sure that we get the bid price sticking going forward. So that's probably also important part of the conversation, and more near-term and immediate action than what's on the log, so council should plan some time for that.
Do you want to set that up, Carol?
I don't have all the information with me right now.
No, but I mean, set up a meeting time to have that discussion?
It would be helpful.
What was that? I couldn't hear that.
We're going to, we'll have Mary send out an email on that as well.
I guess if you wanted to set up a time to meet to have that discussion soon, sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I, I thought I heard you say, Carol, you asked whether we could discuss it right now, matter of fact.
No, not right now. He doesn't have to figure this stuff, but, but there's no reason why we couldn't have a meeting within the next week.
Correct.
Next few days.
We can set a meeting up. We'll set up a meeting with the fire department, the issue on the fire department pumper, and ARPA spending. So Mary will send, I'll, we'll ask Mary to send out an email to everybody, so we'll arrange for a meeting to discuss both of those topics.
Sooner rather than later.
We could ask that question.
Chris, how much have we set aside in the last two budgets for the fire truck?
For the fire truck?
It's over $500,000.
Over $500,000.
And what are the bids coming in at?
It's over $600,000.
So we'll do that meeting all at the same time?
Very good. Very good.
The only other item for you is just your general awareness. We were put on notice by Amtrak that they intend to do some of their track maintenance and herbicide application that will commence after March 1st.
Do they have any rat, do they have any rat poison they could throw in there on their way through?
No, the herbicide helps wipe out a less than an hour. So that's, that's just for your awareness.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Carl? All right, here and done, we'll move on to Town Council Committee liaison reports. Does anybody have anything to report?
I could report on the Board of Ed budget. The last meeting I went to, they talked about the budget. I know she's going to come here and talk about herself, but, you know, tremendous amount of work that they're putting into it right now. I guess the bottom line is, the operating budget request is at 1.89%, and it's mostly staffing, and that's, that's driving that. Staffing benefits, 57.3%.
Is that increase, increase in personnel or increase?
Operating.
Operating.
By contract?
Operating, she has it, you know, I don't, I'm not here to like try to defend it, but the, it looks like, it looks like, I don't know.
We'll have Mary in, Mary Ann will be here, so go for it. We don't need to do that now.
You have to do it now.
Certified salaries is 1.94%, non-certified salaries is 3.14%, and benefits actually decreased. So that's staff-related budget costs. The total, the cap, capital increase is pretty significant, just the percentage is significant because there was really not, no capital last year. They're asking for $465,000 for capital, various projects across the different schools, and so bottom line numbers is somewhere around 2%, 2.32% is their total request.
Sounds like 800 grand.
Chris, I don't know if this is relevant or not, or maybe you don't have the answer. Do you know what the surplus was last year at the end of the year for Board of Education?
I don't know.
Could you get that for us, please?
Yeah.
We can get that to work if we're Mary Ann.
Just so that we understand the process, Mary Ann will be presenting on the ninth. Between now and the ninth, Mary Ann and I have a conversation, because capital does get amended at the manager's level. And those discussions of surplus and what is projected surplus go into that conversation for where the capital shakes out. So there's more to be done on the Board of Ed budget beyond just their own individual meetings.
Right, and I'm just trying as the liaison to tell you what happened at the meeting, so I'm not trying to defend it or be an expert on it. But, but I will ask questions at the meeting, so.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah.
Anybody else? All right. Here and done, then we'll look for a motion to go into executive session and invite Carl and.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, we are back from executive session. We will now move on to item number 12 on our agenda, which is the rat, to ratify of legal settlement. And at this point, I will look for a motion to approve settlement discussed in executive session, subject to approval by the Workman, Workers Compensation Commission, and further move to authorize the town manager to sign the relevant settlement papers.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. We will now move on to an adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?